Okay, all right, so at 6:33 I'd like to call the meeting to order, so roll call, Carol.
Carol Hoffs is present.
Julie?
Julie Byers is present.
Lori?
Laura Shifman is present.
Mike?
Mike Verasco present.
Okay, and do we have Ian present?
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Okay, so you're coming in Ian as Lanzo, right?
Yes.
Okay. And Lance McNally is here. So I have no additions or deletions. Moving to 1.3. I have, I assume that everyone's had a chance to review the minutes of January 10th. Is there any discussion on the minutes of January the 10th? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January the 10th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 10th, 2022.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second Carol's motion.
Okay, so how do you vote to approve the minutes, Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes, sorry for the delay.
That's all right. Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. So do we have? All right, gosh. So Karen's not, her appointment starts in five minutes and she's not on board yet. All right, so let me just drop right down to work sessions. So final master plan. So Bill, I noticed that you had posted a PDF version of the master plan.
That is correct, this is the PDF that includes all the appendices which bloated, of course, the size of the document.
Yeah, can you put a Word version up?
We cannot, we did not manage to create a Word version, I can give you a Word version without the appendices. I can certainly put that up. But whatever, we kept crashing trying to produce a Word version with all those patched. And I can certainly, with the appendices separately.
Yeah, can you just put up the Word version, so what, did you just use like Adobe Professional then to go ahead and add that stuff in?
To be honest, Karen is, sorry, Kim is not here. And ultimately, she was the one who managed to get it done, I tried. And I got nothing but gobbledygook at some points for certain documents that I converted, so.
Okay, could you do me the favor of put up the Word that you could?
Do you want me to put it up on the share screen or on the SharePoint?
Beth, what is the best, how is the best way, Beth, I'll look at you. You're on mute, Beth.
I would imagine getting the Word document into the SharePoint folder is preferable unless the board would like to look at it right now. It's really.
No, no, I don't want to look at it right now, I just wanted to get a Word version.
Yeah, no, the Word version, I'd like it uploaded into the SharePoint file, just like you did the PDF, if you could do that, Bill. If you need to section it, you can section it, the appendices and the word, you know. So you can send.
As I said to Lance, you know, I can give you the master plan without the appendices as Word. And I can give you the Word documents, but we were never able to merge them all together, so you just have, you'll have four documents because there's three appendices.
Oh, that's fine, as long as, yeah, everything comes, absolutely, yeah, that'd be great. And I don't think we ever received the final version of the economic development plan, can you send that? I believe that we had the draft, but I don't think the planning board ever got the final.
Okay, the final is in the appendix.
Perfect.
But I will give you the, the, as a Word document separately then.
Oh, okay, so the appendices, can they come in Word as well?
I believe, I'll have to check on what they all, I know at least two of them are in Word, maybe I have all three in Word.
Okay.
It was combining that, that killed it. The, actually, it was the economic development document, anytime we pasted it somewhere else, the formatting went wild and changed and we ended up with stuff all over the point. So the only thing we managed to do was get it into PDF somehow or another, or Kim actually did it.
The economic development report?
But I will give you it as is, and that way it's formatted fine as long as you don't touch it, I guess, or breathe too heavily.
Okay. That would be great, and that way then I can go ahead and start to look at it and put a plan together to move forward with it, okay?
All right, I'll go ahead and do that now while, while you guys are meeting and I'll let, send Beth an email.
Thank you.
Okay.
That'd be great.
All right, Beth, you're killing us, 3.2, so we have a unified planning work program project discussion on December, on February the 8th? With the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I gotta double check that date. No, that date is the due date for the project proposal, February 8th. We'd like to meet jointly with the Board of Selectmen on, I'm sorry, not, I have the wrong date, it's February 1st. Yeah, it should be February 1st, so.
Not the 2nd, the 1st?
Correct, so it's a Tuesday night, Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. If, this is just a suggestion, but it would be a town decision as to what project we want to put forward. And so we do have some different proposals, you know. One of them being the intersection at 119 and 113 there in the center of town. That was never officially put like on the docket, so that is one choice that, you know, would be put out there. And Veronica has some other ideas, so I don't know if she's on the call right now, I don't think she is. She was gonna come in, yeah, she was gonna come in and talk about some other ideas, but. Let's, if you want, I can open up the memo so the board members can get an idea of what sorts of projects are generally asked, you know, asked for under this grant. Would you like me to do that? Intersection studies, walkability studies, that kind of thing.
Veronica is just connecting right now.
Yeah, and I don't see Karen yet, which surprises me.
Okay, so I'm a bit, I'm a bit confused, so in 3.2. All right, that's when it's due, and in 5.1, Beth, you have a joint meeting with the Selectmen on February the 2nd. Should that February 2nd be February the 1st?
Yes, it's a Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and you're gonna take care of posting that? Okay, great.
And at that meeting, we'll have a draft proposal letter put together, but I just, Veronica and I thought it really, you know, it is a town decision. I believe we really want to focus on one project. You know, we can ask for others, but it's unlikely and it would take away the focus from, so picking one project for the whole town is really a decision that should be made by the officials. So that's what we're trying to do.
All right, would the board members like to see Beth sort of share the proposed projects?
It's the memo from UPWP, it's in your folders under Work Sessions.
All right, I think that we could just look at it individually unless someone basically is jumping up and down.
Yeah, it's simply a memo, and in the memo it lists the types of projects that are applicable. Like the intersection studies, a corridor analysis, trail planning, yeah, that kind of thing.
Okay, all right, so with that then I'll move on to 3.3 since I do not see Karen. So, thank you Julie, you did an excellent job in terms of that bylaw. Do any of the board members have any questions with regards to Julie's proposed bylaw? Or does anyone want us to go ahead and share it so everyone can, can look at it real quick?
Lance, can we share that just so we can look at it real quick, just because I did not.
Not a problem.
Oh yeah, no problem, let me pull that up.
Can you put it up, Beth?
Sure, I was just gonna try to email Karen because I don't know where she is. All right.
Okay, Beth, you need screen sharing?
Yeah.
Okay, give me a moment here.
Oh, whoa, 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 yeah, let me make sure I have the right one. Let me propose. Yeah, okay.
Okay, give me a moment here.
Okay. Wait a second, I don't think this is the right one. Yeah, maybe it is. Okay.
I sent it to you on January the 11th. I don't know if you're looking for dates.
I am gonna go back and take, take it from your. Because I think I have the wrong one. Okay. So I can go ahead and screen share now?
Yes.
Okay. Does that look right? Yeah.
Okay. Can you see that all right, Mike?
Yes, I can. So what I added in red isn't in red, the red that you see on the screen was what was already there. But my, my language is in black, I don't know if that's too confusing.
Okay. Which.
I can kind of, so, so what I added basically was, yeah, what you're highlighting right now, female chicks and hens, yeah, all of that, and then stop right there. Yep. So this is for the residential.
And the building commissioner did review this and comment today that he is, is in favor of this proposal.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was gonna say, I'm not wedded to the 10 feet and the 25 feet, I just, I put in numbers that I thought made sense and then just let everybody discuss.
No, I think it's, I think it looks great.
I agree Lance, the only thing I might change a little bit is 25 feet from a residential dwelling, maybe like in a butter's residential dwelling, maybe. Because I do know people that would probably like, I don't know, keep it a little bit closer to their house, I don't know if that's something the Board of Health recommended or something. Just wanted to kind of bring that up, maybe bring it up to a butter's to kind of really protect the neighbors more than the people that own the chickens.
So, and 25 feet from, in a budding residential dwelling?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I think that, just because I think that's the purpose of that verbiage, correct?
Yep, yeah.
Honestly, I, my thought too is maybe even up that a little bit, just because 25 feet is still pretty close and.
I've seen them at 50.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was gonna suggest 40 or 50, you know, depending on what the board thought, just because I'm thinking really what, what the purpose of this is for. I mean, once you get to an acre, you know, it's pretty easy to get, you know, 25 feet away from residential dwelling, or, you know, even 50. But this is more, from my understanding, this is kind of, to limit the issues that we've had in certain areas of town where there is less than an acre. And, you know, the, the density of the houses is a little bit more, so that's why I'm thinking maybe up that to 40 or 50 would be, would be my suggestion.
But the only, the only comment I have, just to think about, is. Oftentimes people have, I think it's called the chicken tractor to be precise. But what it is, is it's a, it's a cage that they basically move around their yard. And so the chickens have different areas to be in. And that would limit the chicken tractor.
Yeah, maybe adding some verbiage of a permanent coop or pen, that way the tractor can move and we could, we could add some verbiage into there. Like, you know, it can only stay within that area for, you know, daytime hours of X amount and be a little bit more specific on that because that.
You know, but you know what, not, not. You know what, I think I'm, I think I'm, I'm good with 50 feet from a residential dwelling, I don't think we need to make, overcomplicate it.
Yeah, that, I, I was thinking, I mean, if you want to get specific, I mean, they're gonna be there for a couple hours, I mean, those tractors, they don't keep them, most people don't keep them there for longer than, you know, a day or so.
Yeah. But you know, I mean, if, if you're 10 feet from a property line, and what code is that, usually a residential dwelling's gotta be at least 25 feet? From a property line, so you're already at 35 feet just with how we have it specified. So I think if you change the 25 feet to 50 feet, you're really only adding, what, 15 more feet to it? Are you good Julie? Julie, are you, you're good with 50?
Yeah, I'm good with 50.
Carol?
I'm happy with the language.
Okay, and you're happy with the modification to 50?
Yes, because I have no concept of how much span that is, so I'm good with.
Okay. Lori, are you good with 50?
Yeah, I am.
All right. So I think maybe that since, since Beth, you said the building commissioner has already reviewed this and he's happy? All right, so I think our next step would be to basically. Send this to Adam for his review. And Beth, I would recommend that. We basically modify it so that it's more of the conventional change. So that he can see that what's in color is what's been added as opposed to what's in black. In other words, just to make sure that Adam, so with that, I think we should send it to Town Council for his review. Any comments on that suggestion? If so, a motion to send it to Town Council for his review?
I'll make a motion to send it, the new language on the keeping of file to the Town Council for review.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, how do you vote Julie?
Yes.
How do you vote Carol?
Yes.
Lori? Lori, how do you vote? Mike, how do you vote?
Mike Verasco, yes.
And Lance McNally votes yes, and just, oh, Lori, how do you vote?
Laura Shifman votes yes, I'm sorry.
All right. That's okay. All right, thank you Beth for sharing.
You're welcome. All right. How do I get out?
You gotta hit the stop share.
Yeah. Stop, stop, stop. Wow. Um, I'm not seeing it, got it, got it, okay.
Good job. All right. All right, and we still do not have Karen, do we?
No. Really, I am confused.
Okay, well, we'll just keep going. All right, so Safe Routes to School update, Carol?
I met with Emmy Hoff and Rachel O'Donnell from Safe Routes to School on, last week. And we went over the checklist and many of the items on the checklist, the ancient center has already, is, has already done or is planning on doing. We, Rachel explained the program to Emmy and she's probably gonna be adding some more activities. We talked about how she walks the, from the recreation center to the Spalding School. We also talked about the intersection for the middle school kids that walk to school. The intersection where, I'm bad with street names, where Highland Street is, and it connects with. This side, the, not the Route 13 side of the common, but the other side of the common. And in how they walk in the dock. They, they don't have a, an escort like the elementary school kids, and that intersection is very dangerous. And actually, when I've been on the common for some, you know, activities, I've actually seen cars not even stop at the stop sign, while slow down and just go through that intersection. And in the morning, if it's dark and you've got kids and you've got cars, so that was an intersection that was a concern. And maybe looked at, I think there's gonna be grants in the fall. And also Emmy had said that they're gonna do some kind of bike thing in the spring where if people can bring their used bicycles and they have somebody that'll fix them up. So Rachel is going to donate some helmets for the kids and some reflective vests. And I believe Rachel's gonna be doing the walk dismissal and arrival evaluation next month.
Well, that's good news. We should make sure that Rachel gets a big thank you.
I will, yeah, we had a good, we had a good meeting, we met down at the rec center, so we had a.
Okay, thank you Carol, are there any questions for Carol? Okay, thank you for the update. All right, 3.5, Planning Board Annual Report, I thought you did an excellent job on that, Beth. Thought it was very well written. Are there any comments from anyone on the board in terms of our discussion on the annual report that Beth put together?
No, just that I thought it was very well written, so thank you.
And it was short and sweet, you know, like two and a half pages.
That's joint effort, Chad started it and I finished it, and we kind of worked on that one together.
Okay. If there's no discussion or any comments on the annual report, can I have a motion for the board to approve the annual report?
I'll make a motion for the board to approve the annual report.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you Lori, how do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. All right. All right, so Beth. MVP. Plan implementation.
No, no update at this time, we haven't really discussed it with the new, with Benny, the new grant administrator. There is a, well, we definitely have to work on the implementation, so, but right now, nothing is being done on it, so.
Okay. All right, 3 points, whoops, I'm sorry. Someone jump in? Okay, 3.7, Townsend Housing Production Plan Review.
Yeah.
So what, we have a meeting scheduled for the Housing Authority on January the 27th?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I assume that you're posting that, Beth?
Yeah, it's all posted, you should have all got the email today with the latest revision of the housing master plan, of the housing production plan. And agenda, so that's all ready for your review.
All right, and walkability report and intersection analyst report?
Nothing there right now, there's going to be, actually, a brief update on that. Veronica Selectman Cal, rather, and I are trying to get together a meeting with, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. The Planning Board and the Department of Transportation to look at the next steps as a town.
Okay.
On that, I'm gonna double check on when that, when that's gonna take place. And I'll let you know.
Okay, and then 3.9, so in terms of the town election on April the 25th?
Yeah, Lori Shifman, Shifman asked me to keep that on the agenda, I don't know if she had something she wanted to update on that.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, you have anything that you wanted to add to 3.9 on our election on April the 25th?
Oh, only that we need to keep reminding. Our current elected board that I believe, I don't, Carol, when is your term up? Beth, do you know when are each individual?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was, I don't have it off the top of my head, but that was all in the materials provided.
I didn't, my name wasn't in that list that was provided, so I just assumed I wasn't up for.
Yeah, Carol saw that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically that those of us, those who are up and, and wish to run again, need to pull their papers.
Okay, and what's the deadline for pulling papers, Lori?
I think the deadline is more when they get submitted, right?
Well, the deadline, I think it's, what is it, March 4th?
Okay.
We're taking them out now, but then I, I think it's sometime in March is the deadline for returning them, there's a, there's a deadline to take them out. And then I think the deadline to return is a week later. And it's maybe the end of February, beginning of March. And then that's what they can get on the ballot. But, so, we have, okay, let's answer the question about the associate member. So I don't believe the associate member does anything with the election unless he would want to run for a vacancy. Otherwise, his appointment would be good until June 30th. Should he decide to run for a permanent seat and, and wins, then we would have the associate member vacant again after the election. I know that. There's been some talk about if we go to in-person that. This may not be possible for some member or members to attend in person, so. They may not run. So I am, I think we have to keep this all in mind. Michael was appointed. I believe, so Michael would run, again, he'd pull his papers and run for whatever terms there are that are vacant. So if anybody has any questions, you know, they should call Kathy to make sure, because Kathy Spoferd is the town clerk who's in charge of it. And. You know, I'm not gonna run. And I don't know who else is gonna run, but there's gonna be at least one vacant seat. And I don't know who else is gonna run, but there's gonna be at least one vacant seat um for somebody to take out papers for. And hopefully before we end up, maybe by the next meeting, uh which is in February, right? When's our next meeting?
Um, February 14th.
February 14th is our next meeting?
Yeah, so.
Oh, how nice to have a meeting on Valentine's Day.
I know.
So I I think if anybody wants some help in getting their signatures or going through it, I'm happy to help. I'm happy to have papers at my office for people to come in and sign. Um, cuz you always wanna get more than what you need in case people are just signing because um.
Yay. Karen, I'm sorry, Karen came on.
I'll stop talking.
Wait a minute, I lost her. Oh, there she is. Oh, good.
All right. Um, okay, um, so that's 3.9. Um, so we had an appointment with Karen at 6:40 and an appointment with Mike at 7:00. Um. Karen, do you have a problem if we just do our 7 o'clock appointment and then you're on right after that?
Absolutely not, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Um, all right, so Mike, um, so without any further ado, Mike, um, and Mike's gonna sort of give us a a presentation on conservation restrictions and OSPD. And just um for the board members that really have no experience with conservation restrictions and OSPDs, um I believe that on our next um board meeting in February, we're going to have a applicant come in to have a discussion on this. And so I thought it was would be good that the new board members sort of get a brief introduction on this and you know, and don't hear it cold for the first time at the next board meeting. All right, Mike.
All right, thanks. Um, yep, so hi, Mike Crowley, Land Use Coordinator. Yeah, um, I will just kinda start off with uh basically a 101 level of conservation restrictions. If we have more questions and things like that, we can get more into it, but it's a good kind of working starting point. Uh, a conservation restriction is an agreement that is agreed to by someone who owns the piece of property uh and another party. Um, generally speaking, whenever you have a piece of property, you have a bundle of rights that come with it. Bundle to development in wherever that's applicable, uh to use your land in certain ways. Uh, there's a whole bunch of things that get in there. When uh either a private homeowner applicant or uh some other entity wants to ensure that part of their parcel is protected under a a conservation restriction that um they reach out and coordinate with a town, a land use department, and basically work together to create an agreement, which is called the conservation restriction. Um, the conservation restriction, basically you forego certain rights to ensure that their continuity is protected in the future. Um, any rights that are determined are basically, you know, agreement with the landowner and whoever else is signing off on the conservation restriction. Um, so most typical rights to to kind of trade off are, for example, upbuilding rights. Um, and so let's say it's a situation where you had a private homeowner who had a parcel and they had a lot of backwoods. Um, and they had no intention of building on those backwoods and for whatever reason, they wanted to place that into conservation. And reasoning could be anything from uh, you know, this is my family home and it's been really valuable to me and to my children to have this uh woods in the back and I wanna make sure it's it's protected that way in perpetuity. Um, or it could be just because um when a land is assessed, its assessed value is based on all of the availability and options you have within your rights. And so you might, you know, have a conservation restriction and basically limit your rights to say develop your backlot. In exchange, your assessor then says, oh, well, that's not buildable now, so we're gonna decrease the value and you can pay less on taxes. So there's a wide range of people that, you know, come to this and for different reasons. Um, the, when a conservation restriction is developed, there are allowed uses that are determined and restrictions that are determined. And so they can be basically anything. It depends on the situation. Most commonly, um, a conservation restriction won't be on a whole piece of a property. There'll be a part that's excluded. It's called the building envelope. Guess what? That's where the building is, cuz you can't conserve that at that point. And beyond that, any other rights can be completely incorporated as needed, so it's not uncommon to have conservation restrictions that include selective forestry that continues in, for example, a backwood law. Something that we wouldn't necessarily say, well, that's not part of a conservation restriction is forestry, but the main thing is that when a conservation restriction is established, it is established uses that are determined in perpetuity. And so that was get attached to the deed. And so if you're a homeowner and you have a conservation restriction on the back of your property, then the person who buys your house from you keeps that that conservation restriction is part of the property, so on and so forth. Um, it's something that, as a result, it usually is a process that is involved in making very deliberate concise decisions. It's very good delineation about if you're having, say, a building envelope, where is your building envelope? And it doesn't have to be where there's a building. I've seen conservation restrictions that are created where a person, say, for example, had a large property that had three frontage things. They could subdivide it three times into a line on a large amount of property if they wanted to. And they said, well, I like my house and I'd like for my kids to have the ability to build here, but I don't wanna be able to see their house, so I'm gonna put a conservation restriction down the middle that no one can build on, so I never have a house I have to look at. And then the other side of that, there'll be another building envelope, and so someone, my kids or someone else could build over there if I had a subdivision. It's really a a good process because it is a way to for landowners to stay in the driver's seat in any kinds of restrictions and decisions, because they're authoring it. There's not some external party that comes in and says, this is what a conservation restriction is and you have to adhere to it. Um, it's authored collaboratively between the person signing the agreement and the people who are going to be monitoring it. And so that's the second base, is all conservation agreements are in involved more than one party, commonly a land trust, but can be mass wildlife or a town or some sort of government. And they're the person that does the monitoring to make sure that the conservation restrictions and allowed uses are being maintained. So basically, all that means is when they first sign off, they come in and do what's called a baseline report. They just walk the property and be like, yep, this is where the property line is. This is the condition of the property. You take some documentation. And then each year, they come out at least once a year and do an assessment where they visit parts of the property, not usually all of it. And just to check to make sure that the conservation restrictions and allowed uses are being complied with. Um, that person, that organization comes and does that in perpetuity, so they're just making sure everything works. And they're checking on making sure that the landowner is complying with whatever the conservation restriction is, but also in particular the abutters. So a very common situation is uh someone who's doing um their assess their annual assessment might go out and find that a neighbor has been throwing yard clippings over the fence line and just dumping it, cuz it's a woodlot. And they have to, then that person notifies the abutter and says, hey, you know, this land is a conservation restriction, dumping isn't allowed. You can't just throw your leaves over the fence. So in those cases, it's usually just involves a discussion. Um, but the key things is that when they're developed, it is a an a an agreement that is crafted between the landowner and the this external agency that's gonna be monitoring it. The, once the agreement is reached, those are the agreements in perpetuity. Usually, they don't make conservation restrictions for a shorter duration. It's usually forever. Um, and that there's this another party involved that does the monitoring. So that's the the very quick 101. Let me stop and ask see if everyone's got a good sense of it, or I could go into any more details or follow up with specific questions.
One thing that I just wanted to add because um I was not aware of this, but um oftentimes there are deed restrictions and um I did not know is that a deed restriction does not exist in perpetuity. So that if you wanted to put a, you know.
Oh, I lost Lance. Is everyone else still there or is it just me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Lance, we lost you.
Okay, I'm still, I mean, did you hear me? What, say what?
Lost probably your last two sentences.
Oh, my last two sentences is I was mistakenly believing that a deed restriction existed in perpetuity. So if you wanted to put a deed restriction on your pro- on a piece of property so it wouldn't be developed, if you want it to exist in perpetuity, you have to do it through a CR. And I did not know that.
Yeah, there, that's a good point to bring up because there are other types of restrictions that are similar, that are somewhat different in both their intent and their goal that you might run across going forward. So agricultural restrictions, which basically says that this parcel is designated for agricultural use and can only be used for agricultural. And so those are another similar agreement with a specific use. And it's a great way to say protect a farm field and lower the taxes of the farmer to help support the farmer in there. Um, you'll also hear about something called, uh I think it's Chapter 61, um if I'm remembering correctly, which is like forestry plans, so there's a sustainable forestry plan that's long for it. And so that's slightly different than a conservation restriction feels pretty similar, and there's like Chapter 1A, Chapter 1B, and we won't get into all of that. Um, but in terms of just that baseline understanding of what a conservation restriction is, it's just, it's it's that kind of a simple agreement, but it is something that is uh well-developed because it is meant to be um held in perpetuity and exists beyond just the owner's uh use of the land.
Um, so Lance, also on the deed restrictions in Massachusetts, they expire after 30 years unless they're extended. So that's another difference between the two.
I knew I was, you know, I was careful. I'm sitting there going, here, we have an attorney here that I thought it was only 27 years, so I learned something.
It's 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 actually one of the reasons that I'm glad that I was asked to come here and just chat about it because it's very easy to miss to like, because a lot of these exist very parallel to each other and include very similar language, it's easy to think, oh, this is one thing, oh, this is another, and then get confused and get your wires crossed. So I'm always, anytime you want, if you want me to come back anytime to do this again, I have 100% for it because I love when people can get a firm grasp and feel empowered with what they know. So do you guys have more questions about how those work, or I know you guys also want me to talk about open space? And we can talk about that as well, but I'd love to, yeah, if any more thoughts or questions. Did that make sense to anyone, I hope? So, good.
It was great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I guess I'll I'll talk a little bit about open space and we'll kind of go forward. Um, so uh this, I was asked to talk about open space relative to the bylaws here in town. So that's again, framing the context, you know, like, oh, we were talking about a formal agreement that is, this is more specific. Um, so our open space development plan is in our bylaws. Um, there are a couple of points that I thought I'd just kind of bring up and share, which when I read through them earlier today, it was like, these are the ones that like, for me, being the guy who's only been here for three weeks, like, oh, this is the relevant detail I need to know to get started. So in terms of open space density, in order for somebody to be uh zoned for open space development, it needs to be at least 10 acres of contiguous upland. So you can't just have an open space development on a small house lot, but you also don't need to have a whole town. Um, there are design and use standards. Um, so the idea is the buildings are grouped into clusters and then um no less than 30% of the land shall be devoted to open space. So if you're, say, having a housing development and you're having an open space housing development, you kind of build houses close to each other and then have a large piece that remains open space as within that housing development, or whatever you happen to be developing. Um, of that 30% of the land that's set aside to be open space, no more than half of it can be wetlands. So if you've got a property you're doing open space development on and it's 50 acres and you're like, oh, I'll just I'll just put that that wetlands over there as the open space area. There has to be some non-wetlands as well. You can delineate all the wetlands as open space, but that doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to meet your standard of what you need to have. And so there's a bunch of other technical rules about like, oh, you know, is this what's what's described. It has to be naturally existing woodlands or fields or things like that, but you know, things that basically define what open space is. Um, there is indications about how no more than the 20% of the open space can be covered with impervious development. So you can't, for example, say, the open space is the parking lot. Good job, everybody. We're all done. We can go home. So there's a lot of just different regulations that go into it. There's some regulations about lot size and frontage and how far away back you're supposed to be. Um, how far has to be between the common space and property lines? Very technical stuff that I don't wanna bore you with. I can go into if you want, but I don't wanna like overwhelm you with the get go. So that's open space development. Um, there is also a bylaw, open space multifamily development, which is similar but has a few differences. But does that help with open space development before I contrast that with open space multifamily development?
I think that's good. I mean, the whole purpose is and and typically that open space is available for the public to have access to.
Yep, and so I'll talk about that open space management cuz it's the same for both multi- for multifamily development and just basic development. Just a second and how that regulates, but I figured I'd break it down a little bit cuz otherwise I'm just throwing too many numbers at y'all. Um, in terms of open space multifamily development, it's very similar. Um, except that in terms of density, instead of being 10 contiguous acres, it has to have has to have at least 10 dwelling units. Um, and in terms of design standards, now that things still need to be clustered, but instead of that previous um 30% of the property needs to be put aside for open space. With multifamily, 60% of the property has to be satisfied for open space. And it has the same requirements that only half of that can be wetlands. So it's again, very similar in a lot of its structure, but there's a few other metrics that get measured by in particular because it's multifamily and it's kind of designed for a larger development. There's a greater amount of open space in the property project. Okay, I don't see anyone's eyes crossing yet, so I'm gonna keep going. I feel like we're doing pretty well. My land use professor would be clap, would be proud of me from college. This is perfect. All right, so now into the final step, which is um the developer, when they're putting this together in an open space, they have to outline what group has stewardship of the open space. Whether it's a homeowner, uh it can't be the homeowner, but it could be a homeowners association, it could be the town. It could be any kind of separate entity, like a land, it could be a land um a land use coordinator, not, uh, sorry, not land use coordinator, a land trust, like it could be coordinated with a land trust. No, don't give it to me. I don't want to just jump. Uh, I got enough to do. Um. In terms of management, once that's, it has to be designated for open space, it's then open space from then on, so you can't say I'm gonna do an open space development and put aside this land as open space and then come back 10 years and say, well, now we're gonna develop that. Um, it has to be, if it's conveyed to the town, there are restrictions and designations about making sure that there's access to the open space so that it's usable and people can get into it. Um, outlined is maintenance of the open space to make sure that it's maintained in its openness or whatever designation it's gonna be, but again, this is kind of getting into the weeds and contingent. So if it's grasslands and it's going to be managed as grasslands, you have to determine how do you make it grasslands and not transition to wood. Basic stuff, but that all is very specific into the case by case. Um, so don't let yourself get bogged down with that. Anything that is put forward in open space development, both multifamily and the regular open space development, that is all pursuant to approval by the Planning Board, which you all right here, so there you go. So these are the kind of the things you kind of look for. Um, if you guys get to the point where you're starting to get open space development proposals and you're starting to look at them and you feel like, great, I have that little primer and I need like more information, you can reach out to me and I can come back and we can do more technical or we can do a one-on-one, whatever is easiest. Um, but it's all in the bylaws and surprisingly, the bylaws are not too confusing on this one. It's pretty remarkable. I'm like, wow, wow, this is great. I was expecting it to be a way more of a quagmire, but it worked out quite well. Um, but that's just kind of the, again, the 101 level of the bylaws of Townsend's open space planning for both um development and multifamily development. I see some smiles and some nods, so I assume I did pretty well again.
Yeah.
There we go. All right, good. All right, and so, yeah, you guys, I would love if anyone has further questions, either we can talk about it here, you can come to my office, we can talk about it. Um, for anyone who's not a Planning Board person but still has questions about this, again, can contact my department. We can have these conversations. Cuz I feel like this is one of those things that, you know, I don't want people to feel like they need to understand how to read bylaws and how to in interact with the meeting in order to ask questions. And so I'm glad that you guys are having, let's start the ball, let's start it open by getting some conversation and getting one to understand. But I'm definitely available for more information, whether at this meeting or individually if anyone has more questions. So this is great.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike.
Okay. And let me know if there's anything else I can do in the future, but I'm gonna stick around. I wanna hear what Karen has to say, too.
Okay. All right, Karen.
Hello. Can I get my camera to come on?
Are you gonna want, are you gonna wanna be able to project something?
Yes, I'd like to share my screen if it's possible.
Okay, give me a second and we shall do that. Hold on.
Again, I apologize so much for missing my appointment.
Oh, don't worry at all about it, Karen. That allowed us to get everything else on our. Oh, don't worry at all about it, Karen. That allowed us to get everything else on our agenda just about done.
So you're going to anticipate me hurrying up so you can go home?
No. No, we still have to go through our notices from Townsend and other towns before we can adjourn. So you're not the last one on the agenda.
Okay. All right, can, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, is that even better? There we go. All right, so these are slides that I gave to the commissioners at their meeting last month. So Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Monmouth Regional Planning Commission. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Karen Chapman. I'm the Planning and Development Director at MRPC. I used to work in Townsend in Mike's role. So, Mike, that was great. So the District Local Technical Assistance is a program that provides all of the thirteen regional planning agencies with two-point-eight million dollars according to statute. And that gets divvied up among the thirteen RPA's. So MRPC gets about a little over two-hundred thousand dollars to provide free services to our communities. And this is the fifteenth year that we've done this. So this year, the, the priority funding areas are similar to past years, planning ahead for housing, planning ahead for growth, supporting the community compact and assisting NBTA communities is brand new this year. So in planning ahead for housing, these are projects that whoops. Sorry. Planning and implementation activities that encourage and support affordable and market rate housing production opportunities. And this includes all the housing choice initiatives. So these would be things like a housing production plan or evaluation of properties that would be good for affordable housing or implementing your housing production plan or any other kind of housing project that you want to do. Planning ahead for growth is more towards the economic development side, so doing planning and implementation activities that encourage and support economic development opportunities. I believe last year Townsend took advantage of this by doing the forty-three D. So projects like that for downtown business, for your industrial zones, your commercial zones, any kind of studies you want to do about it, if you want to do changes to your zoning to promote economic development, if you want to evaluate your zoning to see if there's impediments to economic development. So those types of things. And in the call for proposals that you get, there'll be a, a long list of, of things that you can choose from or think of yourself. And then supporting the community compact, this is to support communities that have assigned community compact with the state, but don't necessarily have to have assigned community compact. You can look at all of the best practices for every every sorry, I'm anything a municipality does, there's a, there's a best practice for it. So you can go through, and also attached to the call for proposals will be a long list of all the best practices in the community compact. And like I said, you don't necessarily have to have a signed compact, you can be working towards a best practice. And so I'll get into the MBTA after all this. So process and timeline, so we're required to mail it via the US Postal Service to our communities twice. So we will be mailing that out tomorrow. And at the same time, we're going to email it to everyone just so you get it right away and people can put it on their agendas. So that's going out tomorrow. So the deadline for proposals from communities will be March first so that the commissioners can vote on that at their March third meeting. And then for the second round, we'll mail March second. If, if all the funds haven't been allocated and, and since I've been here, that's never happened. So there will be a round two. And so that deadline is April fifth, so that gives a little more time for people to get their proposals in. And once it's voted by the commission, I'll notify the community the next day. Questions on DLTA? I know that was quick and short, but you'll be getting the official notice tomorrow. Any questions on that before I move on to MBTA communities?
Yeah, did I understand that right? The, the first round deadline is March first and second round is the next day? Deadline?
No, the second round would be April.
Oh, April, okay, April. All right, March first and then?
March second, we'll send out the next mailing.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So April fifth is the second round. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else? Oh, and the program does run through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. As you know, you've been participating a lot. So I'll move on to MBTA communities.
Yeah, maybe one more. How many, how many projects can a town request through DLTA?
Great question. So Glenn and I talked about, Glenn is our executive director and he and I went over the call for proposals and the criteria we were going to use. So the state would like us to use seventy percent of our money on MBTA community assistance and thirty percent for all of those other categories. You know, we don't know what we're going to get. We've also decided that if we get too many requests, then each community would only get one in addition to MBTA assistance.
Okay.
Because some communities get three a year and then, you know, it's not fair to the other communities. And we've decided that we've, we've awarded too many projects and we end up running out of time and things happen with staff and we end up going past the deadline of December. So we're trying to get a handle on it better.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. All right. So back in January of twenty-twenty-one, the governor signed the Economic Development Bill. And this added section three A to our favorite chapter forty-eight is owning that. And the purpose of this small section was to encourage MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts where multifamily zoning is permitted as of right. And that meet other requirements set forth in the statute. So back in January, the Department of Housing and Community Development put out a preliminary guidance for MBTA communities where, you know, it said what an MBTA community is, who are they? And what you have to do. It really wasn't, you know, everybody had a ton of questions about this and why are you forcing this upon us? And there's no way we can pass this in our town. And so we waited until December of twenty-one before they had a complete draft guidance for multifamily districts under this section. And everybody is still asking the same questions. So this is a map that they have on their website. It shows MBTA communities in green and the hash are not subject. The purple lines are the train lines, obviously stops in Pittsburgh, stops in Worcester. So it's a lot of our communities. And if you are but a community that has a stop, you're called an MBTA adjacent community. And so on this map, there's four different types of MBTA communities, subway, a light rail and bus are obviously closer to Boston. And then commuter rail, the train stops right in your community. And then MBTA adjacent, like I said, is a but of town that has media rail. And so Townsend is an adjacent, MBTA adjacent community. There's different levels of how much housing, how much density you have to have based on your population. So this little chart I made shows the communities in our region that are subject to this section. What type of MBTA community they are, as I said, Townsend is MBTA adjacent. The twenty-twenty housing units, so this is twenty-twenty census numbers, these are actual numbers. So you can figure out your subsidized housing inventory now with this new number. So Townsend has a year-round housing units of three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six. And according to the new statute, you have to allow seven-hundred-and-fifty multifamily units in your new district. And the way they do that is you have to have fifty contiguous acres at twenty units per, I mean fifteen units per acre. And so if you do the math, it comes out to seven-hundred-and-fifty. And so that's what this percentage here is, the minimum multifamily units as a percentage of housing stock. So Townsend is ten percent of three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six, so your number is three-hundred-and-fifty-seven. I'm still confused on, oops, this is blocked. This is unit capacity number, so. Sorry. I got to find out from the state what the difference is between this three-fifty-seven and this seven-fifty. So stay tuned. All right.
Karen, I think, if, if I may, Lance, I think that's because that that first number is a multi-unit number versus maybe the units themselves. Well, no, I see, I see what you're saying, because then it's a unit capacity. Yeah.
I was at a briefing about this, I think, two weeks ago. And they indicated that they had in the designation created a seal, a, a floor. So if you had a community that was smaller than the ten percent number ended up being what it is for us, three-fifty-seven, you still had to comply with the floor of seven-fifty. They wanted that as the bottom, the minimum for any community. So.
Yeah, that, that's so anyways, thank you, Mike. Was that the one that they, that the HCD had? On the twelve?
I think so, yeah. And I've been going through the, the policy on this as well.
Yeah. All right. So the requirements, it's a very small section, there's only three bullet points. You have to have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right. And a district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre and be located not more than point-five miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or bus station, if applicable, applicable. Obviously in Townsend, that's not applicable, applicable. So you have to do the minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. An MBTA community that-
Karen, can I ask a question? I, I can't figure out how to raise my hand on this thing, but that fifteen units an acre is far past what Title V will allow. So does this law overrule Title V?
There's a section in the guidelines that talks about you have to do this unless Title V regulations don't allow it, but it doesn't, it doesn't give an out, like it doesn't say what you do in that case, like we have no sewer. How do we do this?
Right, it's not going to happen.
Does every border health, are they forced to change their regulations to allow, you know, multifamily? You know, I know we have some common septic systems in town, but not very many. But for fifteen units an acre, I just don't see how some of these small towns can do it.
No, it has to be a package sewage treatment plan in, in this town.
Right. And then the border health would have to change their regulations to allow that.
Yeah.
There's too many variables for this to pass.
Okay.
Thank you. So if you don't comply with this section, you won't be able to get funds from these grant programs, the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund or the Massworks Infrastructure Program. If you don't normally apply for those things, do you care? I don't know. There's no, and there's, they don't say anything about, well, what if we choose not to comply and then we just don't apply for these grants? It's a carrot stick thing. In the Department of Housing and Community Development is supposed to promulgate guidelines to determine if an NBA community is in compliance with this section. So we'll see what that means.
So Karen, this is Lance. So, so we could identify a district and pass a bylaw to comply. And even though that Title V would prevent us from any implementation and still qualify for these funds, correct?
Yes. And they stressed in the meeting that I believe Mike was at, I, I went to as well, that this is not a, we're going to build it tomorrow. It's only a capacity issue. We just want you to have it on your books. It may never be built. But you know, what's the point of that? If you're trying to get people to build affordable housing and more housing, you can't force it on them. I mean, I'm getting into personal opinion, but all right. So if you're not currently in compliance, I guess the first step is to figure out if you are in compliance. But if you're not, you have to create an action plan and get approval from DHCD of a timeline to pass a new district and an action plan by no later than July first, twenty-twenty-three. So you have a little over a year to do the action plan. And then implement the action plan, which is just actions toward adoption. Adopt the zoning amendment and they won't approve an action plan if you don't have, if you have an adoption date later than December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So they want you to wrap this all up by that date. And DHCD will determine if you're in full compliance within ninety days of submitting their information. And then to remain in interim compliance with this section, say you want to apply for a Massworks Infrastructure Grant this year or any of those other grants, you submit a complete request for determination of compliance as set forth in section nine A above. Or notify DHCD that there's no existing multifamily district that fully complies with these guidelines and submit a proposed action plan as described above. And that was here in the action plan. So in, I'm sorry, that, that was this one is if you want to go for grants this time. So you have to have a presentation of the draft guidelines which came out in December to the select board or city council. You have to complete and submit an MBTA community information form, which is on their website. It's not a lot of questions. And then submit our updated GIS parcel maps. And there's only fourteen communities that haven't done that and they are going to contact the communities. I don't, I believe you're up to date. So the information form and a presentation to the Slack board, if you want to apply this year, that will keep you in compliance.
So, Mike. Mike Crowley.
Yes, Mike Crowley.
So are you the one that's laying awake at night with this May second deadline?
No, because the May second deadline is basically the application form that Karen had mentioned that basically says, put your point of contact on it and you can like request that you would like technical assistance and support in moving forward. But it basically says, it's, it's, it's a very simple checkbox of like twelve questions that basically just-
Yeah, I, I looked at it. I mean, is that something that you're going to fill out for?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll take care of that?
May second will be taken care of by me, yes.
Okay, and what about putting together a, a presentation for our select board?
I can do that i- if that would be what people would like. Karen has a great presentation here. If she wants to do it all over again and take it on tour, I completely understand. But I can also do that and just give some, some guidance and let them know timeline and things like that. I already put together kind of a briefing notes to keep myself frame of reference as we're going.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure somebody lays awake at night to just make sure that we don't miss this.
Yeah, no, the, it, we have some ramp up time for sure on this, but we want to make sure we do our due diligence and not miss the, miss the easy putt and then get to the long drive and be like, oh, now we're really in trouble. So.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I ask him a question on that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, on the forum, Mike, you mentioned- Okay, on the forum, Mike, um you mentioned that it's going to be the first place that we could ask for technical assistance. Um I'm sure on other people's minds is uh, you know, the DLTA for technical assistance for this. Um, how do we sort that out? Maybe that's a question for Karen. I mean, if we need to use DLTA for this, um then we, you know, obviously it's a town's decision, but if we don't, and if there is technical assistance available from the state, h- how do we, how do we sort that all out? You know, like we could use DLTA for something else if if we got, does anybody know?
So Mass Housing Partnership is giving technical assistance under this program. And I believe um, I haven't read the whole form online, but I believe you can request it. Mike, is that true?
You can request the technical assistance and there might even be funding to help get it. If you, depending on what you need to do, like I imagine the communities that need to update the GIS parcels, there might be funding for that. I don't know. They they, yeah, we're not the only town that is an adjacent community that is septic, that doesn't have a sewage system that is based on septic, like for example, Princeton is one of the communities, and I think they have three thousand residents. And so, you know, that I don't think we're gonna be the only town that's asking these questions. And I'm hoping that we can get some technical assistance and maybe even have like a work group where we're like, we figure out the solution that works for everybody, or at least guidance going forward.
Yeah, so so one comment that that I have, Mike, is that and Karen and everyone, that there's a lot of synergy between all the various towns on this and um being able to put together um, you know, even bylaws and what have you, that we shouldn't all be trying to reinvent the wheel.
No, absolutely. And I think DHCD is pushing the RPAs to help our communities so they don't have to do it themselves. I mean, they're already giving us money to do technical assistance for our community, so they want us to do this. Um it's up to you. Uh, we're perfectly fine helping out. And like I said, um Beth, when I talked with Glenn today, we agreed that if we gave a community MBTA help, that they could also have another DLTA.
Project, yeah, okay, great, yeah.
Because you're right, Lance, it's a lot of the same stuff. I mean, a majority of our communities don't have any sewer. So we um, I volunteered to send comments on, so the due date for comments is March thirty-first to DHCD on their guidelines. And so I'm going to do a letter from MRPC with my thoughts on it. If you'd like me to include, um I was considering including all the community's comments too. If you want to do a letter yourself, if you think it has more impact that we send it and you send it, um just let us know. I hope to have a draft um at least after the next commission meeting, because I want to talk to the commissioners again about it. So just let me know on that. Um, save the date, this virtual webinar they had, I didn't learn anything new from it. Um, they didn't answer questions. They took questions ahead of time and made a fact sheet and put that on the website for people to read and um any of the questions that were typed in during the webinar, they didn't answer, they took them in, and I assume that they'll have something else on their website. Um, I don't know, Mike, if you felt differently about the meeting?
Uh, well, it was convenient for me because it was my second day, and so it was great to get on board with it. But it it was, it was very much, um here's your information if this is your second day, kind of a meeting. There wasn't any exchange of ideas or communication. Um I'm hoping there's more dialogue and maybe that they're waiting for people to submit the form to do that. Um but I I I, yeah, it wasn't a question and answer session so much, it's just a, here's a presentation, I think.
Um and that's it on MBTA communities. If you have any other questions. All right.
All right, thank you so much, Karen, for taking the time out and um joining us.
Oh, it's a pleasure.
I am very relieved that you're also keeping an eye on this. So thank you so much, Karen. I'm like, oh, thank goodness, somebody else is looking at this at the same time.
Follow or email me anytime, Mike.
You're on my list. I've got a lot on my list, though, so you're on my list.
All right, good night, everyone.
Okay, good night, Karen. Um, okay, um, so I think we're at four point one. So Mike, are you still um just working from your iPhone?
I'm actually on a computer today, but I am looking under uh the notes that she sent and I cannot find four point one. I only go to three point nine.
Oh, so Beth, are you, can you um go through the notices?
I can, and I apologize, they did not get uploaded. So that was during my my COVID recovery.
No worries, I feel better now. I was like, oh, look at this, they got a laptop I might do tonight.
Nope, you're you wasn't there. Um, I'll start off with we're back to, yeah, December number, yeah, I was pretty sick when this one came in. Town of Pepperell zoning board of appeals, uh notice of public hearing for a um application for a variance. Um, it's a setback variance. Uh, the project is um eleven Sartell Street, and that was held on January twelfth at seven twenty. So it was for a year, a rear yard variance um change from the sixty-foot setback to the down to a twenty-five-foot setback. Uh Town of Groton Planning Board uh held a public hearing on January thirteenth to consider an application submitted by Kilborn Place under Groton zoning bylaw sections, da-da-da-da-da. Um, the proposed use is a medical office at two hundred and forty Main Street, AKA Kilborn Place. Um, and it is also a request to modify the site plan review permit issued on this project. And the last one is um uh Town of Pepperell Zoning Board of Appeals, a notice of public hearing. And this occurred on January twelfth, and it is for uh an accessory apartment in a principal residential structure. If anybody wants those, any follow-up on that, any of those notices, I can get those for you. But I'll put them, I'll upload them so you have them in your file, and that's it.
Beth, what was the address on that accessory apartment?
Just a moment, please. The accessory apartment. So that is two Maureen's Way in Pepperell. Uh Maureen's Way is a new subdivision off of Route dirt one eleven, um as you're going from one nineteen into town. Um it's on River Road, actually, River Road or one eleven. It's a huge new subdivision, yeah.
Okay, all right, that that explains it. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other uh questions before we adjourn or discussion? All right, since I didn't hear anything, um do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, how do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Um Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Borosko, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. All right, thank you, everyone, for um being here tonight and look forward to seeing you on February the first.
Twenty-seven, Thursday night.
Yeah.
Oh, the twenty-seven, then the first, okay, bye now.
Okay, take care, everyone, stay well.
Thank you.